Discussion with Woodard and Curran and Raftellus regarding a water rate analysis. You guys are on, I see.
Yep. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
This is Steve Robbins with Woodard and Curran.
Hello, Steve. We can see your screen.
Great. I'll give Phil credit for the screen. I think he was the one who did that one.
It's a beautiful screen.
It is. See, you know? Let me just see. Okay, that's fine. It looks like I can't turn on video and that's probably better for you all, but.
It's all right. We can make that. We can solve that. All right, try again. He's rejoining as it passed. Haven't seen him come back though. Can you see him? He's back. Hey, Steve, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you now. Now that I've, well, that's fine. It looked like it moved me between different roles, but that's okay. We'll jump in.
But still didn't give you a video.
It didn't, but I'm not going to say that that was anyone's fault but my own. Who knows?
All right.
That's fine. We'll jump in. I will work it out. Well, thank you all for your time this evening. I'm Steve Robbins. I'm a senior technical manager with Woodard and Curran. And I'm the lead on this project where we were retained by the village of Pleasantville to assist with a capital needs assessment, financial forecast and rate structure. We're pleased to have Dave Fox and Phil Sapon from Raftellus, who are doing the financial modeling and the rate structure and are going to do the majority of the talking here tonight. Phil, if you don't mind moving ahead a slide. And we can go forward one more. And one more still. So Woodard and Curran met with the village operators with Mr. Carr, the DPW superintendent, and conducted a tour of major facilities in the village with an eye towards identifying any anticipated major capital needs. We looked at that over about a 10-year horizon, and these are the anticipated major capital needs over the next five years. The reason that these are important is this is going to get into a bit more of the nitty-gritty on the financial model and rate forecasts. In summary, the major capital investment that's necessary in the village is a replacement or rehabilitation of the existing storage tanks, anticipating that that would in fact be a replacement. We are looking at a storage tank design proceeding in fiscal year 2025 and then a two-year construction process in '26 and '27, which would involve removal and replacement of the existing storage tanks. Life service line inventory is also a key item that the village is undertaking currently with an eye towards an October initial inventory and then ongoing inventory work beyond that, as needed to fill in any gaps that might still remain. Notably, we did not anticipate any major water main rehabilitation or replacement projects over the next five years, and that is indicative of the, well, really just kind of starting to kick in with some other, some initial projects in 2029 in recognition of the other capital investments that are necessary in the first four years of this study. There would be an ongoing need for water main rehabilitation and replacement beyond fiscal year 2029, but we've laid this out to try to set some realistic expectations for what capital investments the village might be able to afford in the near term. So that's the underlying capital needs that we identified, and those serve as some of the major inputs into the financial model. And with that, I'd be happy to either answer any questions on that initially, and we can certainly come back to questions later, but I'd be happy to transfer this over to Dave Fox from Raftellus.
Do you have a sense that, just back to that screen, $500,000 in fiscal year 2029 for a water main rehab and replacement? Do you have any sense for what percentage of the total system, $500,000 would rehabilitate?
It's probably about, it's less than a percent. It'd be probably closer to a half a percent of the system. Really, the village's water mains are all nearing the end of their design life for the most part. And so we would envision, for good planning purposes of the village, look to undertake, you know, 2% or more per year if finances allow, which would put you on a 50-year replacement cycle from, say, 2030 moving forward.
At give or take $2 million or more per year?
If, yeah, at current, at current financial rates, yes. And certainly that can be targeted towards those areas that are most impactful in the short term, but looking at a broader financial horizon, that's where a lot of communities are right now dealing with 100-plus-year-old pipe in the ground.
Okay, well, you can explore that more later. That's a disheartening number.
Is it Bercherry chocolate milk or liquid gold or something else? All right, you go ahead.
Dave?
Thanks, Steve. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Let's see if I can get my camera working. See, wonderful. Not that you need to see my ugly mug, but we'll have you see one of us. Thanks, Phil. You're joining me. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dave Fox. I'm the vice president with Raftellus. We've had the privilege of working with the village as a subconsultant to Woodard and Curran on this project. Just way of introduction, Raftellus is the largest firm in the country predominantly focused on rate and financial planning-related matters for water and wastewater utilities across the country. Phil and I predominantly work in the Northeast, although we do some work across the country to understand what's going on elsewhere. Phil's going to go through, and he was the predominant consultant working with the village to put the entirety of the model together and run different scenarios and options. So I'll allow him the opportunity to get into the details and kind of walk you through our process, how we got to where we are today, but just at a, you know, at a very high level, working with that capital improvements plan that Steve just went through. In addition to all the other revenue requirements or costs that the village is currently incurring and will incur over time, trying to identify, you know, just what the across-the-board revenue needs are, and then get into a little bit of how you're recovering those revenues and some potential alternatives with regard to the rate design itself or the rate structure itself. So with that being said, just being brief, I know you have a lengthy agenda. I'll turn it over to Phil to get through the remainder of our model, and we'll be here for questions as they pop up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So it looks like you guys can see me. You can hear me too, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. All right. So jumping right in to things here. So talking about a financial forecast where we look at, you know, needed, necessary changes to rates and possible increases to rates and, you know, what revenues need to be to fund future costs. I think it's also important to look back at where water rates have been. It helps put things into context. So here are your existing rates summarized. I don't have all the readiness to serve charges by meter size, but I do have the volumetric rates by resident and non-resident. So the main takeaway here is that your ready-to-serve charge hasn't really changed, well, hasn't changed since 2015. So it's $57 in 2015, and it's $57 for a 5/8-inch resident in 2024. And I show that for the 3/4-inch resident and non-resident as well. So essentially, these readiness-to-serve charges haven't changed going back 10 years. The volumetric rates for a resident, for a non-resident, they have increased slightly. So they've gone up from $6.74 per CCF, excuse me, $6.47 per CCF to $6.74. So 20 or 30 cents over the last 10 years. And then the non-resident volumetric rate, that's increased from $9.73 up to $10.13. So that's only increased about 30 or 40 cents. So there really hasn't been significant increases to the water rates over the last 10 years. And what I did was I overlaid this into a chart. So let me, let me talk through this. The bars here, the blue bars, those are your, that is a monthly bill for a resident with a 5/8-inch water meter and 4,000 gallons of water use per month. It comes out to $53.62 in 2014, and then I calculated every year based on.
That's separate from the ready-to-serve, right? That's just water.
That's everything. That's readiness, readiness to serve plus the water rates. So I'm calculating it, calculating an example or a typical monthly residential bill for every year based on this and based on the rates shown here.
So if the ready-to-serve is $57, how could the bill be fit? That, oh, I'm sorry. The 57 is per quarter.
Quarterly, yeah. Sorry, I couldn't fit it all in here, but.
I get it. Okay, fine. Go ahead.
Yeah, so switching from quarterly to monthly. So this is the monthly bill. Hasn't really gone up much because we haven't seen the water rates go up much. What I do is I compare it to the Consumer Price Index. We're all pretty familiar with that by now. We've been hearing about it the last couple of years. It's coming out for the month of April this week, I think. So it's just a basket of goods and services in the US economy for a typical consumer. That has gone up by about maybe 2% or 3% per year, probably more like 3% per year over the last 10 years, and that's this green line here. So if you increased the water bill by CPI, you'd get from $53.62 per month to about $70 per month. Now, there's a component of CPI called the Water Sewer Maintenance Index. So when you hear Consumer Price Index, it's a basket of goods and services. In the basket is what a typical consumer pays for water and sewer service. That goes up by about maybe 4% to 4.5% per year. So if I were to increase the water bill in 2014 by the Water Sewer Maintenance Index, the annual change in that, I get to $80. So what I'm showing here is that costs have gone up in general, as shown by CPI and the Water Sewer Maintenance component of that, but revenues haven't really followed that based on historical rates, excuse me, based on historical rates in the village. So again, just some, just some context as we get started and get into this. Hope that's helpful. So Dave talked about building a financial forecast and building a financial plan, and we did that. So we customized a financial model for the village, and we put in, pull it back up. So we customized a financial model. It's an Excel-based tool. So we build it from an Excel spreadsheet, and we put in all the relevant financial information. So customer accounts, build consumption, beginning cash, future revenues based on existing rates and potential changes to rates. We put in the operating budget, and most importantly, we put in a capital plan, and that's what we worked with Steve on. And then we say, based on those project costs that we put in, how are we going to fund it? Are we going to borrow the money? Are we going to pay for it with cash rates? Maybe talk about some fiscal policies and targets like for cash reserves, for debt service coverage. The model does all its calculations, and it gives us a five-year or maybe even a 10-year, depending on how far we want to look forward, gives us a five-year or 10-year view of our future costs, and then how revenues need to change to fund those costs. So that's what, that's what our financial forecasting model does, and this is just a general diagram explaining that. Here's some, here's a, here's baseline results from, and it's a kind of a screenshot from our dashboard of the model. So let me explain what we have. In 2025, we were told that there'd be potentially a 4% increase to the water volumetric rate. That translates to a 3% increase overall from the readiness to serve and the volumetric rate. So I input that. And then what I did in these years, '26, '27, '28, '29, is I said, let's just stay below 10%. Let's go at 9.5%. You know, we know we have some significant costs coming in the future. And then let's track our two financial metrics that we like to track: cash reserves to a minimum target and debt service coverage. So we can see cash is declining based on the costs we have inputted into the model in this baseline forecast and the 9.5% annual increases to the readiness to serve and the volumetric rate. And debt service coverage is just a measure of our ability to pay back the money that we borrow. We want to stay above 100% on that. When it goes below 100%, it just means we're dipping into reserves. So this is getting better. I think the reason why is because some debt's being paid off, but cash balances are declining. So.
Because they're being applied to the debt.
Correct. Correct. Yep. So again, this is just a baseline, baseline forecast. Numbers will change. We just wanted to set something up initially that we can work with as potential, you know, as our inputs, whether it's capital projects, operating expenses, as they change. This is a, this is a really great tool we can use to look into the future and see what we have to do with water rates.
I should have asked this earlier, but can you explain to me the different components of the water rates and how that functions? The, from your earlier graph, basically.
So you talk about back?
Yeah, like how does the volumetric rate relate to the, to the other charge and so on?
Yeah. So I think what you're asking is, so you have, you have a readiness-to-serve charge. That's a fixed charge.
Okay.
Which is basically, we've got a pipe to your house, right?
Yeah, and it's, and I talked a little bit more about this on a future slide, but I'll kind of get to it now. So readiness-to-serve is a fixed charge. It's quarterly, and it's based on meter size. So if you have a smaller meter, you're paying $57, like a 5/8-inch meter per quarter, but as you get a larger meter, you pay more. Okay, and that's fixed.
Being able to have access to the water, basically.
Basically, yeah. And then you have your volumetric rates down here. That's on a per-unit basis, per CCF.
Okay. All right. I got it. Thank you.
That's the basic gist. Yep. Okay, so I'm going to kind of skip ahead just to keep us moving through this, but I guess this was kind of to your question too. So what is a readiness-to-serve charge? What's the readiness-to-serve concept? Readiness-to-serve costs represent the fixed costs incurred by the utility to provide service to customers regardless of whether they use the service. I think that's what we've, we've just been saying. So that's the idea of readiness-to-service, excuse me, readiness-to-serve. The utility incurs costs whether or not water is used. So it's recovering those costs through a, through a readiness-to-serve charge. And because these charges largely recover capacity-related costs, so the system has to be able to provide capacity when needed. Customers with a potential to use more capacity, as in customers with larger meter sizes, should pay a higher readiness-to-serve charge than those with lower potential capacity demands, or those with smaller meter sizes. So that's why you see the readiness-to-serve charge go up as the water meter size increases. I didn't show them all because I couldn't fit them on the slide, but if I could show them all, you'd see the charge go up as the meter size goes up.
I just had, and how does the meter size, is it just based on the size of the square feet of the home? How's that work?
I mean, most residential's are, most residential customers are probably on a 5/8-inch, anything larger with different uses. I think the village probably has to assess what the use is, and they may, based on, based on the use of the property or the plans for a new development, and then assign a meter size to it based on, based on its water needs.
Big house, sprinkler system, pool, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. So we just say most of our residents are 5/8s, because no one really has pools in our village.
Most residents are paying that 74.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just backing up a little bit. I kind of jumped into this a little quick, but when you see these revenue increases out here, the second part of this presentation, it's what I'm getting to now, is how do you want to recover the additional revenues in the future? There's likely going to be increases to water rates. So do we want to change, do we want to increase just the volumetric rates? Or do we want to increase the readiness-to-serve charge and not the volumetric rates? Or do we want to increase both of them? So that's what I'm getting toward here. So when I talk about having readiness-to-serve charges that are higher, there's benefits to that. There's also drawbacks. So benefits of having higher fixed charges or readiness-to-serve charges, better matching a fixed cost to a fixed revenue stream. Utilities have, water utilities have mostly fixed costs, although in your case, I know you purchased water from New York City, so you do have more variable costs, but it's good to match fixed costs to fixed revenues because you have to pay for those fixed costs. You can increase revenue stability. So if you have more revenues from your fixed costs, your revenues won't fluctuate as much, depending on whether it's a wet year or a dry year. And if you have more revenues from your fixed charges, then you don't have as much variability in your revenues, and then you don't really need to keep as much cash in reserve to pay for costs in years when water use is down. So those are the benefits. Drawbacks, it's less conservation-oriented because people's bills are mostly fixed charge-based, so there's not, they don't get as much of a bill impact when they use a lot of water. There can be affordability issues if there's low-income folks who are also low-volume water users, because again, so much of their bill is just a fixed charge. They can't reduce their water bill by using less water. And the last one, there can just be issues with cost recovery, which I'll just kind of just mention there. I don't want to get into that at this point. So water system cost structure, again, fixed costs are high. They're typically 80 to 95%. The village's water system, it's a little bit lower because you purchased water from New York City. So you're probably having a larger percentage of variable costs, but still a lot of fixed costs. So that's why it's important to have a fixed charge like the readiness-to-serve charge. Where do you land now? So right now, your readiness-to-serve charges generate about, I have you at 29%. I don't know why it's there twice, but I have it, have you at 29%? I think I pulled out the bulk. I know it says bulk, the bulk rates, and I think the cottage school rates, but they're not in there. If I were to add them in, it's more like 75, 25. So you get a quarter of your revenues from readiness-to-serve. You get 3/4 from the volumetric rates. That is pretty typical. Dave, I know you talked about this in a previous call we had, and I know you also work with probably more similar-sized utilities in the Northeast than I do, but I think we agree that that's probably a pretty appropriate breakdown between fixed and volume-based revenues. Is that right?
Yeah, a quarter of your revenues coming from a fixed charge is typically right where we'd like to see you. What we're getting at here is, as we need additional rate increases or revenue increases into the future, if we're only focusing on that volumetric charge and we're not also increasing the fixed charge either proportionately or some mixture, the, that piece of the pie that is currently about a quarter of your revenues for fixed charges is going to shrink. So you're right in line with where we'd like you to be right now in terms of your revenue recovery with about quarter coming from fixed, but if we don't increase those fixed charges over time in tandem with those volumetric charges, that percentage of revenue is going to continue to shrink over time and kind of get away from where, you're in a great position now. It'd be wonderful if you stayed there rather than kind of going in the other direction. Just for really those revenue stability reasons that Phil brought up, you know, if you have fluctuations from year to year in terms of demand or consumption, which most, most water utilities deal with, you know, that portion of your, that 75% to your revenue currently that's coming from volumetric charges, that's susceptible to those fluctuations, and you're going to see fluctuations in your revenue accordingly. By having a core component, about a quarter coming from those fixed charges, that's stable. It's predictable. We know it's coming in.
Yeah, and I'm going to fast forward through a few. I'll come back to them, but I wanted to show you this chart here. So what I did was, I said, if you only increased, so I have three scenarios here. If you only increased volume rates in the future to get the necessary revenues that you need, how would your, how would your fixed charge, how would your fixed revenues break down? Well, they would go from 29%, which is about where you're at now, and to Dave's point, they would decrease to below 20%. So that's a little bit low. So I think what we need, what we would like to see is maybe a proportional increase. I did run, if you just increase the readiness-to-serve charges only, that's going to get you way too much. So we don't think that's a good option. So it's probably something in the middle, looking at a proportional increase to both charges into the future. And I ran a couple bill impacts. So here's those increases again, 3%, 9.5%. And here's a customer that uses 19 CCF, a quarter. That's a typical. That's at the median. You can see if you were increasing just the volume rates, or if you increased just the readiness-to-serve, or if you did proportional, it's not really too much of a, too much of an impact on them. If you were to just increase the volume rates, the low-volume user would get a big break. If you were to only increase the readiness-to-serve, they'd get hit harder. And if you were to look at a high-volume user at the 75th percentile, 30 CCF, if you were to only increase the volume rates, they get the biggest bill impact by 2029. Sorry, this is 2029. So I'm just, I'm just looking at it over five years to make my point. So anyway, those are just some brief bill impacts. I think the more impactful or the slide with a clearer conclusion is this slide here, which is to Dave's point about how revenues break down in the future if you were to only increase the usage rates. It would, it would be too low. So let's see. I think we have one more slide. Yeah. So we have the, we were asked to put together a rate survey and bill comparison. And what we do is, it's hard to compare rates, utility to utility, because each utility has different rate structures. So we compare the rates by normalizing them and calculating a monthly bill. We assume a 5/8-inch meter and 4,000 gallons of monthly water use, and we calculate a bill for the village under its existing rates and proposed rates for next year. So it's about $55, and it's about $55 per month. And under the new rates, the proposed new rates, $56.45. And a lot of these communities, and these should all look pretty familiar to you. Most of them, I think a good number of them also purchased water from New York City, but apples to apples, bill comparisons are very difficult to do. There's so many different factors that play into the cost of water service. So we just doing, the way we do these is just for kind of informational purposes and selecting communities in your local area and seeing that, or seeing if water rates for the village are competitive, at least with other, with other, you know, with other local communities. And our takeaway from this is that, yes, water rates, even though they're on the higher end of the ones that are included, water rates in the village are still very competitive with other communities in the, in the local area. So that's our, that's our takeaway here, and I think that's the last slide. So if you all want to ask any questions you've been, you've been sitting on, go ahead.
So further, further to that slide up front, the dashboard, where you showed the declining fund balance over a period of the next five years, that includes this 9.5% rate increase in every year cumulative, right? So.
Yes, it does.
So would that suggest, I mean, what that might suggest is that we should have started raising rates earlier than we have. Third, say.
It does, yeah. And that goes to the first slide I showed about, you know, water rates over the last 10 years.
And the primary change is recognizing the cost of the new tanks. When you fold in to fiscal year 2029 with your hypothetical $500,000 towards water main rehabilitation replacement, all bets are off from that point, right? The capital costs likely dwarf the costs of the tanks. Am I misreading that?
No. What I would say to that, though, is you, you are, in this, in this capital scenario, you're focusing on your, your most urgent need, your highest-impact asset, which is, which is that tank, those tanks primarily. And, and certainly taking some time in this intervening few years to say, you know, what is the appropriate level of investment in distribution? I would, I would say that you really can't ignore it altogether. But maybe instead of, you know, jumping in at 2% per year, you're doing a little bit less, maybe in some higher priority areas, until you retire the debt for the tanks and trying to be a bit strategic about that. That's a bit beyond.
And when you retire the debt for the tanks, that frees up some more money to continue to be in. So we, I mentioned this when we had a Zoom earlier in a sort of preview of this. The village, I want to say 30 years ago, had a series of staged investments to line water mains. Those last 30 years, what, what, what is that generally?
Yeah, 30 to 50 years.
And you can't do it again, right? And you can't do it again, right? I mean, at some point you'll be threaded your diameter down to a drinking straw, right?
Yeah, and that, that's where a bit more sophisticated engineering analysis, analysis can come into play to say, you know, what, what can you do? Can you further reline and really where is the state of trenchless water main rehabilitation technology at, you know, thirty years from now? There's been a lot of progress over the last decade or so, and I would anticipate that would continue.
What is, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you? Trenchless water main rehabilitation, what does that look like?
So, yeah, right now there are a limited number of technologies on the market that essentially pull a new. Pipe through the old one. It's a much thinner, it's not a, something to steal, but it's might be a reinforced thermoplastic or something like that, that's. Rated for, for water contact. And in that case, you might, you know, still need to do some digging to access the pipe, you know, every. You know, let's say every five hundred feet, give or take. But, you know, you're not digging up the whole road in that instance.
And does that work the way it sometimes works with old clay sewer pipes where it's actually bursting the clay pipe as you pull it through?
No, this, at least in the, the technology that I'm referring to, does not do that. It, it leaves the old pipe in place and it really just. It takes up a little bit of the diamond from the inside.
Right.
But again, you know, technologies change and, and opportunities to evaluate your capital investment would change in the fall the next few years too.
And, and obviously, there's the leak detection piece, but in an environment when we're not having. A, a serious ongoing all over the village problem with water main breaks. We've got some time to think this out strategically. Is that fair to say?
I would, I would agree with that terminology of being strategic about it. And yes, you have some time to do that.
Okay, I have a question. When we look at that comparative chart of our rates to the other surrounding communities. It seems like we may have somewhat under invested in our water infrastructure. That, that seemed to be the. Point of the earlier part of the presentation, but when we look at this. It also seems that we're still above many of our peers and of course, most important to us is Mount Pleasant. Which is where some of the residents that we serve actually live. And we're twice their water rate. So what is their story? Is it, are they more under invested or. They have a cheaper way of getting water or what's this?
I was, I was gonna bring that up. Maybe you want to speak to how the other revenue sources are, are utilized in these municipalities. Their assessments, what are assessments?
Let me just, for example, we're part owners of Newcastle's filtration plant. And so, and yet their water rates appear lower than ours by a substantial margin.
Yeah, I was thinking of that too.
And I'll certainly let Dave and Phil step in there, but you know, we should keep in mind here that this is for. You know, one specific use case, which is that residential customer with a five eighth inch meter and four thousand gallons of water use. So. You know, not to say that it's necessarily the case, but there are lots of other customer types. In, in the systems and they might have different fixed versus volumetric charges, residential versus commercial and, and different use patterns that might drive.
So many different varieties.
Yeah. It, it's difficult for us to say exactly what's going on with these other communities without getting in and doing a rate structure or rate analysis, just like we did for the village. Be able to tell you definitively. I will tell you that I'm typically not a fan of, of producing these charts or these bill comparisons to other communities. We're always asked to do so, so we go ahead and do that because we know we're going to be asked to, to produce it. There's just too many variables that allow this to, to not be an apples to apples comparison, as Phil mentioned earlier. Steve just alluded to, you know, you could have different customer bases, a very large industrial customer that's, that's making up a, a greater portion of the revenue base. And allowing rates to say artificially lower for residential customers, which is a customer bill that we're showing here. Compared to some other communities, although most of these are operating as, as enterprise funds and they should be generating their own revenue to pay for water. Self-sufficiently. We know that plenty of municipalities will subsidize their enterprise funds or their water operations with general funds. And they're not supposed to do that, but, but it does happen across the industry, which would then artificially keep these rates low. You know, a lot of communities just kick the can down the road and, and really never reinvest in their system and try to keep their rates as, as low as possible. Up until a point where, you know, it's, it's a, it's a must have, you know, they run right up to that cliff and they're going to run off. You know, the village is not at that point currently, although we are showing the need for, for rate revenue increases. You know, these other communities, if, if they were reinvesting in their system the way that they should be, it's very possible their bills would be significantly higher. So. I know that's a long way to say, I can't answer your question perfectly. I apologize, but you know, it's, it's not a perfect apples to apples comparison here. And, and I would say do what's right for the village of Pleasantville rather than putting too much stock into what other communities are doing because they might not be doing the right thing.
All right. So we'll have to contemplate this all and the detail that you have sent previously. Do other people have questions for the moment?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciated. Wish it were better news. But we hire you to tell the truth. Thank you for that.
Thank you for understanding and for working with the village.
All right. We appreciate the good work.
Thanks, you guys. Take care.
Correct. So we can have a further work section at some point after we've digested this with Anthony and, and, you know, kicked that around further.
So yeah, twenty twenty eight, after we've digested this. The one, the one thing I will say though is our, our water infrastructure is in much better shape than a lot of our peer community. So.
So because what, that's what I thought they were going to say is what is really shown is a disaster that the county is going to be confronting ten years from now.
Yeah, I mean, you can look at other municipalities, how often they're running against water main breaks, closing roads. I mean. We, I actually said the B word. If you say the break word around the water division, they get very upset. But we are very unfortunate. We have a relatively new and resilient infrastructure in the county, but it requires further investment.
A similar and, and also fabulously expensive issue exists in the county about sewer mains. With much discussion going on at the moment, especially down county, about a, a regionalization of sewer systems. And perhaps the county taking over municipal sewer systems. And part of the argument that goes on there is okay, municipality A says, we spent millions of dollars on our sewer system over the last fifteen years and you haven't. If we were to all go in with a regional system, how did we get compensated for the fact that we've already done this work? Instead of being essentially taxed to pay for the work other communities did do. That is the circumstance we're in right now, but as you know. In places where our water system extends beyond the village boundaries, and there are many of them. It's a very significant problem. So. All right. Move on from that. We were gonna discuss the parking permit rates, but I guess Henry Leyva has arrived because the discussion about summer camp.
No, I was gonna buy the parking ticket. That's tomorrow night.
All right. So let's, Henry Leyva, as many of you know, if you don't, lives on Bedford Road, a member of our planning commission. Has been spearheading an effort for private fundraising for, through Rotary Lions Club and the Masonic Lodge. To assist in the summer camp scholarship program, the issue being our funds were fully tapped out. And we had eleven kids remaining on the waiting list. You were at six thousand ish, Henry?
Currently, we have eight kids on the waitlist.
Yes.
We started a GoFundMe campaign last week.
Yes, I saw.
Over five thousand dollars with that.
Wow.
So with the six thousand from, now we said, the, the three organizations said that they were matched dollar for dollar. The first six thousand dollars raised.
Yes.
Technically, we're at ten thousand.
Yes.
And change.
Yes.
But I think the full expense of the eight kids from the rec centers numbers were by fifteen thousand, seven hundred and change. So we're pretty close.
Very close.
We're planning on doing another tequila tasting fundraiser, guys. If you're free on June thirteenth. That King's Crown very generously is donating their space and basically giving us a freebie to, to do the event there.
He's leveraging his, I think, his fermented connections.
That being said, I made it clear to everybody that the village had. In, in principle, agreed to kick some money into the fund to cover the kids. And I'd like to follow through with that. And if we have extra funds, then we can kind of hold on to it for other expenses that the kids might have or that will come up. Covering other stuff, but I just would like to see.
No, last I heard, we were at eleven kids. You said eight.
Unless it's gone, if it's gone up.
No, it was. What would you?
Yeah, it's actually, the last I had was seven kids at fifteen thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Okay, well, that, as far as I know, that, that's where, that's where it is.
Yeah.
The deadline is June fourteenth. The deadline to pay the fees without incurring any additional fees was May thirteenth, but Eric assured us that.
Yeah.
No, no additional fees would be incurred.
In this circumstance, for everybody, but in this circumstance.
One of the reasons I wanted to stop by was just to make sure that we're doing the best job we can getting the information to the families. That a, a lot of the families that are applying for these scholarships. The parents only speak Spanish. They certainly don't read English well. And when Juliana Riley, who is.
Spearheading the GoFundMe there.
She, she spear, yeah, she spearheaded this drive with me and set up the GoFundMe page. She has been boots on the ground dealing with the families. A lot of them didn't know. And they didn't know that there was summer camp.
Yes.
And they certainly didn't know that there was scholarship money available. So thankfully, because of Juliana's work, these families are going to be able to. You know, put their kids in, in summer camp. And, you know, these are families where I know. The, the, the first kids that she approached me about, the father works both at the deli on. The Paraiso on Wheeler and also works in the kitchen at Tesoro. So these are guys that are working really hard, not making a lot of money. And then, you know, they've got older kids, so it's over two thousand dollars to do the. The, the teenage camp. You know, I remember it being four or five hundred bucks when we did the twins years ago, but.
I, I just heard about this last week and I just wanted to tell you I'm very, very appreciative for what you're doing.
Two, three years ago. Thank you. I, I appreciate it. I just, you know.
So three years ago, we didn't have a scholarship at all. And I think we were all very excited to create one, but the fact that there's been this engagement for people to make this real. To extend the awareness and then to actually help, you know, make up the difference between what we allocated and the need is phenomenal.
Yeah, there's a, you know, people in Pleasantville, at least a lot of the parents that I know realize how fortunate we are. And, you know, when you, when you hear about the numbers of the kids that are in the SNAP program. And, you know, I think a lot of families don't know, but the ones that do are very giving and, and very generous.
Well, I want to put something in your, I know we have to finish this discussion, but I want to put something else in your head. You know, the reasoning behind this is that for people like us, we tend to think of the summer camp options as sort of a. Schmorgasbord variety menu luxury item. For people who are working in minimum wage or low income jobs, it's absolutely necessary for them to get to work. During the year, there's another problem they experience, which is that their children finish their school day before they finish their work day. The village has programmed to help with after school care. But we currently don't do a lot to help low income residents. And that can be pretty critical too. So that's something I want to start talking about as we move into the fall. If you can think about it as well, it'd be helpful.
Absolutely. A piece of that is ultimately capacity relief. What happens to us with Panther Club is that. We have a maximum license for how many kids we can deal with. And then a maximum number of rooms and space the school district can give us. And we are generally speaking, always with a waiting list.
Well, yeah, all I was suggesting is that I don't think that people who cannot afford it should be disadvantaged in any way, including on. Being automatically put on a waiting list when we can address this. That's funny.
I guess the only point I want to make is the potential to significantly stand the demand for Panther Club creates a different problem. But I'm not, and, and that problem, I think we're at the point where that problem, the capacity problem cannot be solved. As you, as you will recall, a lot of parents came to us when we had this big jump and said, no, so you gotta expand this to meet the demand, whatever it is. And what the reality is, we can't because of space in the school, what the school is able to do. Staffing, what we're, you know, it's a constant process. So that's a different problem. I just want to, we need to not oversell the capacity to deliver services that we may not be able to deliver separate completely from.
Right.
How much you're costing.
We have that same max for the summer?
No. No, no, I mean, there was, we could conceivably get to a primary department, not enough counselors, whatever. But I don't think we're at that point yet.
No, we have a soft cap.
The school is a.
Different.
Yeah, and you know, my only argument about that is that the lowest income residents actually have the least ability to create other solutions. For that same problem. So I would almost want to go the other way and say, meet their need first and then, you know what? And this includes my kids. I was one of the people when we did initial scholarship, when we created this scholarship for the camp. You know, I'd said two years ago that I would take my kids out of the camp if they were somebody who needed a scholarship. We had a scholarship available, but the space wasn't available. I feel the same way about Panther Club.
Well, the, the other thing that came up from Julie's interaction with the, the families that she's been working with is that she, she believes that if. The village were to do a better job of getting the information out to the community, that the demand for. The summer, summer camp, but also summer camp scholarships would likely go up. And these, as, as David mentioned, these, these are families that really need it as, as childcare to cover for, for work. So in budgeting for next year.
Part of it is a, is a language variant. We need to be getting this out in Spanish.
I, you know, I, I don't want to make that assumption, but it seems like that perhaps they're not, it's not getting out in Spanish. And if it's not, it definitely should be.
So I just chiming in on that a little bit. I think a biggest way to be able to do this though is utilizing the school to help us because I can tell you just from a lot of. A lot of, you know, my Latino community, they're not really looking at stuff that the village is putting out. That's just not. But they are looking at whatever's coming home in the kid's backpack and their, you know, folders or whatever. There's announcements or things like that. They're seeing it there for sure. So I think, you know, the best tool that we could have is working with the school board. And having this, even if we produce it, but having this put in every single child's backpack kind of thing. So that it's in English and Spanish, so it's for both. And then they could see it. And at least that's the way I guess. I know that through the village, they just don't. Like it's not just something that. They see and it comes, things that come in the mail sometimes doesn't even get to them because a lot of times they're multifamily homes and mail doesn't even get delivered to one place. Or someone sees it, thinks it's junk and just throws it out. But I know for a fact that they do check their children's backpacks and they do check. Even if they may not understand it, if we put it in there, they will see it. So I think if we were going to do that, that would be the best way to get the best result.
I agree, that's.
Good idea.
Yeah, my, my suggestion was to need to reevaluate the way that the word is getting put out, but I think that's, that's a wonderful. Option of making sure that it does separate the greatest ways of getting to the parents.
All makes all the sense in the world and obviously would be a great service. The next question is. What does that mean if, for example, the scholarship budget were to need to go to forty thousand? I mean, what we had in eighteen five or something?
Yeah, and then this year we budgeted twenty, which was our funds.
Right.
So it was twenty thousand. So, I mean, we start looking at grants as well for next year? Sure. I mean, what we've, we've kind of surveyed other communities that our size, twenty five thousand, if we were to, what's.
if we were to, uh, let's say increase the need of demand would be um the extreme high side for the municipality of our size. A lot of them, local community groups fundraise every year and there's a, you know, annual summer camp scholarship um that's funded. Um, so, you know, maybe we can have this be an ongoing effort every year. Um.
How is the GoFundMe like feedback going? I mean, obviously it's raised a decent amount.
The feedback from the.
Like, there's, there've been a lot of commentary. People are excited about it. How is it like?
Well, people are so grateful that that it's happening to be made aware of it. Um.
I know it's been posted, like I saw, I've seen that, I've seen the generated funds and I'm just curious how it's.
Yeah, there hasn't, there hasn't been a lot of um.
Or like maybe sharing it. I know you can share a lot of times.
Yeah, people have been sharing it and and you know, the the extent starts to peter out. Like, the first week was the the.
Has it been on one of Fox seven? No, I haven't seen it.
Has, no, like two different people.
Yeah.
I think, I think, but I've seen at least in some, some ways, some criticism of the village is that why are people having to put in to make a GoFundMe and why aren't we giving seven? I mean, that I've seen posts and comments about that part.
Oh.
Or even other posts relating to other things that we do and say, instead of doing this, why aren't you guys putting more money into this fund?
I mean, there are, right.
So that, I'm just saying, there there's some feedback that I had.
Understandable. I mean, in the end, there certainly would be those that say, raise my taxes to make this possible for families in need. And then there would be those who say, I don't want you to raise my taxes to help. Well, families in need, right? It's the the societal divide that exists, so.
You know, other scholarship programs too, like, I mean, like, you're, I think what you're saying through the school is also a great way to send it out, like, working with them, because this is sort of like a dual issue. Obviously, the village is, you know, providing.
I don't think they will work with us other than they will put in the kids' backpack a notice. I I think, I mean.
Do you know the scholarship fund that they do for college?
Yes.
Out of curiosity, who who runs that?
Well, that's a, it's a private not-for-profit.
The private not-for-profit.
Private, community scholarship fund?
Yeah.
That was started by the Rotary Club after World War Two.
Okay.
Uh, in the fifties, um, in the fifties, uh, Rotary decided that they didn't want to have to manage that program any longer.
Okay.
So they turned it into its own entity. So now it's, it has its own board.
Okay.
Um, and uh, the Rotary funds it, partially funds it. We we give them five thousand dollars every year, but then they raise um funds through the uh, they do a.
The five Ks.
They raise.
That's what I was gonna say. Something's coming up where we're raising.
They run the five K every year on Pleasantville Day.
Okay.
Yeah, they do various fundraising efforts for that. Linda Hogan is the current president of.
I'm just curious how those are raised versus like, obviously, this is a I don't know if it's a similar issue, but it feels like it's sort of.
Well, I mean, in that case, it's money ra-raised and it's given directly to the kids or the families who are going.
So in that way, yeah.
Like, the the village isn't involved in any way. Um, and I suppose they have some mechanism to vet the financial need. In our case, we simply said, if you qualify for free and reduced lunch, you would qualify for this program. It's worth considering the question of whether uh maybe the money goes farther if there's a distinction made between families that qualify for free versus reduced and uh potentially a full scholarship versus a partial scholarship. Is that something that's important?
Uh, one of the points that Juliana also mentioned was that there are uh dual income families that you know, suffer financially, but don't qualify for the lunch program. So they struggle because they don't qualify for the lunch program. And then they also struggle because obviously they can't apply for scholarships.
For sure, no doubt.
Some, some people that live in the community.
Right, I mean, and and we certainly heard and I have heard a thousand times um, for folks who say, we love living here, we struggle mightily to do it. Please, don't raise my taxes, don't, don't raise the full fees, don't, you know. E- everything you do adds to the the struggle to live here. So.
Yeah, that's tricky part.
I I love like things like this because if you think about it just in a pure, not not morally, but just in a pure economic sense, this is one way that we can affect the cost of living here that that directly impacts the lowest income residents. Um, that is easier than trying to figure out how to decrease the amount they pay for rent, for instance.
Right, right, right. I I totally guess that. I'm not arguing that at all.
Yeah.
Other than to say, at least historically, those kinds of social services has been at the county level, not at the municipal level.
Yeah, but it benefits us municipally because that, you know, if you don't get people capable to live here, who work in restaurants, you create more traffic, you create higher costs, because then they, their commuting costs is to be factored into what they're paying.
It's also quality of life where these kids, instead of sitting in their, you know, apartment,
Wow.
uh, you know, watching TV or walking around town in the middle of summer, actually in a really wonderful summer recreation program.
Yeah, plus for the younger kids, even those things may not be possible.
So I I think, you know, from our, from, you know, I I'd be happy to continue this, but um, I think the the best move forward would be to reevaluate how you're getting the information out.
Yes.
Um, consider that there are more folks that qualify that are probably not aware of it. And if they do become aware of it, that the demand for scholarships will probably go up. Um, so that that means shifting funds from other sources or, you know, other other parts of the budget to to cover this or figure out how to pay for more scholarships. It would probably for next year and the coming years, that there would probably be a greater demand for it. And, you know, how could you continue to raise money uh for for the kids? But it's expensive. I mean, you know, uh, to to raise fifteen thousand dollars is significant. That it's only going to seven kids, it's kind of like, ooh. You know, that's, that's a small pool that are getting to.
I mean, and and one thing, and maybe, maybe you folks uh have a better sense of it, whether the prospect of helping more people with a partial scholarship is a reasonable idea, right?
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, I don't know. And it might just be where if you can only do a partial, then they can't afford to send their kid.
Yeah, and I I mean, one thing, we sort of can investigate this. I don't know what the income distinction is between qualifying for a free lunch versus um reduced lunch. And whether either of those, what whether the reduced lunch income is still very clearly leaving people in a circumstance where they couldn't possibly do anything.
It's expensive to live here.
So, no doubt.
People making over a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Which I'm sure a lot of these families start anywhere near that. Yeah, it's it's obvious there's a need.
No doubt.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for your efforts. Quite impressive, as always.
June thirteenth, King's Crown, seven to nine. Premium tequila tasting, fifty dollars per person. Um, yes, and again, I just to to reiterate, I I encourage the village to uh contribute uh something towards this, you know, co-covering these kids. And if we end up with additional funds, we can put it forward to the kids during the school year. You know, we'll we'll find uses for the money. But I think in terms of public relations, it would be.
To that point, we can, we would use, put those funds in the T count that that would buy. I also, I talked to um our Senate Majority Leader, Andrew Stewart Cousins, about this. And uh, she connected me to her legislative aides, who are going to make a request. Um, there's no guarantee, but we're going to make a request also through that avenue.
That'll be good.
Yeah.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Again, much appreciated. All right, uh, we're eight oh five. We should, we can come back to the party for main rates. Afterwards, we should jump to the regular meeting. Greetings all. Welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, May thirteenth. Uh, and uh, we have just completed a work session uh and will return briefly to work session at the end of our uh long list of resolutions. Our next regular meeting is uh not two weeks from today, because two weeks from today is Memorial Day. Our next regular meeting on Wednesday, May twenty nine. Seven P M work session, eight P M regular session. And are we here or elsewhere?
We are here.
We're here in this room. All right, so our next regular meeting is uh Wednesday, May twenty nine, uh because of the Memorial Day weekend. Uh, that uh leads directly to a couple of announcements I had. Um, and I can lead with the dates that are coming up. Uh, May, as you know, is a big, is a big uh uh month for events. Uh, Saturday, May eighteen, uh, coming up this Saturday is Pleasantville Day in Memorial Plaza. And uh attached to that uh event are a bunch of other things, the High School Art Show, which is going to be in the Presbyterian Church. Uh, the uh scholarship fund, uh five K fundraiser, uh a whole bunch of things going on for Pleasantville Day, Saturday, May eighteen. Monday, May twenty seven is Memorial Day. We will have our traditional Memorial Day parade, beginning at BRS at ten, uh marching down to Memorial Plaza because of the work that's going on uh at the corner of Grand Street and Memorial Plaza. We will have our ceremony uh at the gazebo in front of uh the war monuments that are arrayed uh across from the gazebo. Uh, and uh obviously be referencing the World War Two monuments, the Vietnam monument and the Korea monument, uh which are over in the zone of construction, uh but will at the completion of the work we're doing for the first time in their uh lives be in a truly honorific place uh with good pedestrian access, uh a lawn in front. And all of the flags will be restored to their original position. So a good thing's happening on that front and we encourage folks to participate Memorial Day, Monday, May twenty seven. Uh, and then that same week on Friday, May thirty one, is the annual Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department Parade. One of the great nights of the year in the Village of Pleasantville, uh beginning up at the library, seven P M, I think. Marching down through the village as it always does. So uh Friday, May thirty one is the Fire Department Parade. And mark your calendar for the Pleasantville Music Festival, Saturday, July thirteen. Pleasantvemusicfestival.com will give you all the information. Uh, and we really uh look forward to a great day. Very much encourage folks to buy tickets. There are a few tent city sites remaining. And so if you're interested in a tent city site, uh Alyssa Hoxton on the third floor can, uh Village Hall can assist you with that. Uh, it's a great base of operations for uh a day at the Pleasantville Music Festival. Block Party Report.
So we um, we are moving forward on the block party on September twenty third, twenty twenty four. Uh, it's going to be on Washington Avenue and also on Wheeler, starting on Washington Avenue at one P M, um to six P M, and on Wheeler from three P M until eight P M, at least.
September twenty first, right?
September twenty first.
Right.
Right. Uh, is it twenty first?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
I ran into the twenty.
I was gonna guess. So it's the twenty first, um, we're going to be putting a committee together for it, through the Chamber of Commerce. And within that committee, we're going to be asking if anyone wants to volunteer. Uh, we're going to have subcommittees, um, and then working together to plan this event. We're going to also be sending out in the next thirty days to anyone who wants to be a sponsor, different sponsorship opportunities. And uh just be looking out, looking out for emails for that. Uh, I also wanted to uh remind through the chamber as well that there's an event, the Rotary celebrating their hundred years of service in Pleasantville. They started in nineteen twenty four. Um, this event will be on June sixth, twenty twenty four, at the Pleasantville Manor, where Pleasantville Country Club is. And actually, the Chamber of Commerce is honored as the honored guest of uh this event. So if anyone's looking to come support the Rotary Club, this will be on June sixth, twenty twenty four. It's at five thirty. Tickets are for sale online. They're one fifty. They include cocktail hour, dinner and open bar. And this also supports their fund that allows them to do things like what was announced today.
So on the Rotary side or the Chamber of Commerce side?
The Rotary side, but they're honoring us, the Chamber of Commerce.
But the ticket sales are on the?
Oh, on the Rotary side.
Ro-Pleasantville Rotary, correct. Okay, great. Thank you for that. Do you want to make a comment about leaf blower?
Oh, yeah. So um, you may have seen a banner that we had up, um, and we had a mailing. Have we seen, I haven't seen it in my.
Yes, I got it.
Guys got me?
Yes, it's been out.
Excellent.
I got it.
Thanks, Alyssa Hoxton, who worked hard to make that happen.
Yeah.
So we, we've been trying to communicate through various ways to remind everyone that our new regulation is going into effect on May fifteenth. So from May fifteenth to the end of September, uh only electric powered leaf blowers are allowed, gas powered leaf blowers are not allowed. Um, so um if you would like more information, there's information on our website. Um, you know, or reach out to the Climate Smart Committee or or me.
Pool update. First off, for the coming season, pool registration is open now. The early bird rates, I think, end in two days on May fifteen. So uh this would be a good time to uh jump and save a little money. We really hope people will sign up. Um, we expect to get the bids back for the proposed new pool project, which also includes a big flood mitigation piece within the next few weeks. And then we'll see what those numbers look like and uh whether we are able to uh digest them or not. We are fearful that the number will come back uh higher than was originally intended.
We're hopeful that it will be low.
Yes.
Um, the um, the other thing to mention about pool is that for the first time, uh digital pool passes are available.
Oh, that's right.
So you cannot get out of the cards.
That's right.
Now you can use your phone.
You still need to get your mobile to once.
Um, yes.
So far, we're not embedding a a LoJack thing in your upper.
Soon.
All right, um, Manville Road Project, as as many of you have seen, uh has has uh started again. A whole bunch of struggles attached to that, but work is ongoing at the corner of Grand Street and Manville Road uh to widen the road between the war monuments and Valvoline to create a right turn lane. Once that has been achieved, the slip lane, the elbow exit up onto the bridge will be closed and the work will continue. A little hard to say what the schedule is at this point. We've had a couple of unexpected bumps in the road.
Yeah, I would say the slip lane is probably on schedule to be closed in about two to three weeks when they run the curve uh over there. But obviously, that right end turn lane passes the construction first.
Yeah, but we're going to put, Yanni had had raised this issue the other day. We're going to uh put up some signs showing what's going on here and what the end result would be looking like. But you can also go to the website, Pleasantville at NY dot gov. Um, uh, I will say, folks have different opinions about how the traffic flow will work, but I do think that uh most everybody would agree that uh we are going to create a much more honorific and appropriate setting for the war monuments, uh which are not moving, they're staying exactly the way they are, but with a a much better uh setting instead of having having uh been situated in traffic. So.
It's going to be a great upgrade in Memorial Plaza.
I agree with that. Anybody else have announcements, comments? All right, we've got a long list of re-resolutions, so we will jump through that. Uh, some of which I think can be summarized as further stated in the record. I leave it to you guys to decide that as you get them.
Yeah.
Uh, one fifty eight call. Let me share my screen.
I have it up. I'm ready.
Okay.
Whereas the Village of Pleasantville entered into a service agreement with Pleasantville Community Television Incorporated, PCTV, and June first, two thousand twenty three, for the term of June first, two thousand twenty three to May thirty first, two thousand twenty four. And whereas Pleasantville Community Television Inc., PCTV, has requested an additional ten thousand in support of the two thousand twenty three dash two thousand twenty four operating budget. Now, therefore, be resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes an additional payment to PCTV in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, this is a conversation we had when PCTV came and visited us. Uh, and uh it it is obviously a struggle to increase that uh number, but we agreed to do it in part because uh PCT's, PCTV's uh board has uh been showing new energy and new ideas and seems to be making really good progress. Anybody else offer a comment?
Yeah, just, um, um, Michael.
Yeah.
Uh, today, actually.
Yeah.
And um, great energy coming from the board and just uh, just a shift of what is possible is definitely on the horizon and good plans for it. And I think we'll be very well used.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
I am. I should approve one fifty nine. Nick Cole, this would be one I think you can.
Okay.
Just the the totals in each category for the transfers.
Okay, so uh, resolving the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending twenty twenty four is listed below. Uh, budget transfers of the general fund arrived at a total of fifty one thousand two hundred and forty two dollars. The budget transfers of the, should I say, general fund, yes. Budget transfer of the water fund, it's a total of eleven thousand six hundred and fifty one dollars. Um, increase of revenue and expense of the capital fund. Increase of revenue and expense of the capital fund arrives at a total of thirteen thousand, four hundred and seventy four dollars. And as further stated in the record, the details of those accounts.
Is there a second?
Second.
So many of these are squaring up accounts as we approach the end of the fiscal year. Comments, questions? All in favor. I motion approve one sixty David.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty four for fiscal year ending twenty twenty four. Check numbers eleven oh seven three seven to eleven oh nine three oh. The general fund, two hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and forty two cents. From special purpose, two hundred and seventy five dollars. And water fund, thirty six thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and thirteen cents. Capital fund, two hundred and forty seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty six dollars and eighty two cents. Refuge fund, twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty one dollars, fifty eight cents. For a total of five hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and one dollars, ninety five cents of payment of claims that's attached. And I believe that about. Half of that capital fund is Nana Hagan play.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor. I motion approve, Danny, one sixty.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty four for F Y E twenty twenty five. Covering check number one one zero nine three one. General fund, one hundred and ninety three thousand, two hundred and ninety two dollars and twenty seven cents. Water fund, seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty two thousand, eighty three cents. Refuge fund, fourteen thousand dollars, seven hundred and sixty, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty eight dollars and forty one cents. Totalling two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty three dollars and fifty one cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
So there's a range, the, the, that's not a single check, right?
It is, it's our health insurance payment for June. We pay it now.
I see, a scribe to all those funds.
Correct.
Got it. All in favor?
I.
Motion approved, one sixty two, back to you.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves amendments of the regular meeting held on April twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four.
Is there a second? Those minutes include Chief Kressner's quarterly report, but also a shout out again to Chief Kressner. At that meeting, I reported that Eric and I attended the event where he was sworn in as the, this year's president of the Westchester Police Chiefs Association. Comments, questions about the minutes? All in favor? I motion approve, one sixty three.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign a sponsorship agreement with Penny Lick Ice Cream. For the two thousand twenty four music, Pleasantville Music Festival.
Is, is there a second?
Second.
Penny Lick. They re-up, they've done this the last couple of years. Much appreciated. All in favor?
I.
I motion approve, one sixty forty.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign a promotional agreement with W F U V. For the purposes of promoting the twenty twenty four Pleasantville Music Festival.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Hi.
I am not approved, one sixty five again.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes a discounted Pleasantville Music Festival ticket rates reduction of seven dollars. For an adult ticket and reduction of four dollars for student senior tickets for sponsors, cultural partners and family and friends of volunteers.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that will be done through.
No, you can't.
Oh, so sorry.
It's all right.
That will be accomplished through a discount code?
Correct. They did this every year. We're just performing once.
All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approve, one sixty six, back.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign a contract with the New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal. N Y M I R for the general liability insurance coverage from June first, two thousand twenty four. To May thirty first, two thousand twenty five in the amount of three hundred and thirty three thousand, nine hundred and fourteen.
Is there a second?
Second, that reminds me of a question I could ask you guys later.
About insurance?
About insurance, it came up, we're meeting with. Different entities about putting together an energy audit for the village. And so there's some piece of. Whether we pay into a certain fund that has to do with NYSERTA, which we probably don't, but if we do, we're eligible for all kinds of funds.
All right, so. N Y M R, the New York Municipal Transreciprocal, is a membership organization that was created specifically to self insure. New York State. Villages, towns, counties and some other entities like fire districts. We have been a member for, I want to say. Pushing twenty years. And I can say from my own experience that. N Y M R has been a very good asset for us. And also an impressive operation that now includes. A very large number of our neighbors as well as Westchester.
And this represents just under four percent increase over this fiscal year. We had seen in the, just talking to colleagues, most people saw maybe five to six percent increase, so. What kind of overall market rate there basically tied to our performance.
All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. One sixty seven.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign an agreement with showstoppers for the Pleasantville Music Festival in the amount of twelve thousand. Four hundred and twenty six dollars and ninety cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Rain insurance?
Yes. We took out a policy last year. The quote was just eight to three hundred dollars more. So.
It's always a challenge to decide whether or not to do it, but this coverage is, the, the, the triggers that would activate the coverage are a little rather than. At some points that we've looked at in the past. So all in favor?
I motion approve, one sixty eight.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby accrues a request from the Break the Hole Foundation for the Into the Light Walk on Sunday, June sixth, twenty twenty four. From four thirty A M to six A M. And be further resolved. The village police chief has the authority to cancel the event due to adverse weather conditions or safety concerns.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is the Break the Hole Walk, obviously a very. Pleasantville, couldn't be a more Pleasantville organization. But a broader focus on suicide prevention and on youth mental health. And the only shout out I offer to this good thing is that folks who are walking past people's houses at four thirty at five in the morning, if they could. Try to keep it down a little bit. Every year we get some complaining about the, the noise generated by all of this. Comments, questions?
It's on June sixth?
Sunday, June.
That must not be right.
That should be a nine.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good catch that June sixth is not a Sunday. Okay, so Sunday, June nine, not June sixth. That is changed in the record, mover and secondary. Okay with that? All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion approved. One sixty nine.
One seventy two.
No, sixty nine.
Resolve that the Board of, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the mayor's assignments. By the following village board members as liaisons to the, to the listed village organizations. Boards, commissions and committees. Pleasantville Fire Department, Alvarez. Pleasantville Chamber of Commerce, Alvarez. Mount Pleasant Library Board, Alvarez. Parks and Recreation Advisor Board, Alvarez. Climate Smart Task Force.
Just seeing Alvarez.
Conservation Advisory Board, Pleasantville. Pleasantville Recycle, Pleasantville Sustainable, Westchester, Aspen. P C T V, Healy Pedestrian and Traffic Safety Committee, Healy. Food, Chester Pharmacy Market, Healy, Planning Commission, Schreier. But Pleasantville Union Free School District, Schreier. Pleasantville Housing Development Board, Schreier. Public Arts Committee, Schreier. Pleasantville Strong, Benjamore. Beautification Committee, Benjamore. This is a doozy, guys. Clinton Street Center, Center. Center Citizens, Benjamore, Zoning Board of Appeals, Benjamore.
Thank you for that. Is there a second?
Second. I just want to say I saw the beautification committee doing a bunch of planting today. And I was impressed. Yeah, it's very nice.
All in favor?
I motion approve, one seventy four.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request of Holy Innocence Parish to close Tompkins Avenue. Bedford Road to the Holy Innocence Church Parking Lot on Sunday, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty four. For the purposes of a parish special event from eleven thirty A M to four P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are they closing the street or the parking?
The street.
And the parking lot?
Parking lot will remain open. We do this every year.
Okay. Got it? All in favor?
Yeah.
I motion approved. One seventy one.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees approves the request by the Superintendent of Recreation and Parks to establish annually a seasonal petty cash fund in the amount of a hundred dollars for the purpose of making change at the village pool.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion approved. Is that now evergreen? It doesn't have to be done again if we said to establish annually?
We'll do it.
All right. One seventy two, David.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby waives a thirty day requirement to local municipalities for an amended liquor license. Application by the Jacob Burns Film Center, three sixty four Manville Road, to the New York State Liquor Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
Not sure what triggered the need to amend, but we routinely waive the requirement for anyone who asks for it. The Burns has a great new wine bar on the third floor called Take Three. We encourage folks to take a look. All in favor?
I motion approve, one seventy three.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Pleasantville Recreation and Urban to hold. Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May twenty seventh, twenty twenty four at ten A M. Set parade route to begin at the Bedford Road. Proceed down Bedford Road to the Manville. To the Memorial Plaza, concluding with a ceremony near the Memorial Plaza gazebo. And further resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the police chief to post no parking signs along the parade route. And in Memorial Plaza and to tow all vehicles violating this temporary park restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please join us as reported earlier, Monday, May twenty seventh. All in favor?
I motion approve, all one seventy four.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Angeli Solo.
So.
Angela Scavo.
Oh, Angela, sorry. Solo from the Planning Commission, Architectural Review Board.
Is there a second? Second. Angela has served ably and we very, very much appreciate her service. Her personal and work life has intervened and she feels the need to move on. We appreciate her service. All in favor?
I motion approve, one seventy five.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the special event permit application from the New York State. Liquor Authority for the Pleasantville Music Festival.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion approved, one seventy six.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby substitute donation from the Pleasantville Chamber of Commerce in the amount of one thousand dollars to Pleasantville.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, that's a nice.
Thank you, Chamber of Commerce. Hello, Mr. Vice President. All in favor?
I.
Motion approved, one seventy seven.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign a sub receipt, recipient agreement, pending final review. And approval of the village attorney with housing trust, with housing trust, housing trust fund corporation. Represented by the Office of Resilient Homes and Communities for the purpose to secure funding in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. For the Nana Hagan Burke Wall Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric?
Yep, so we've secured a grant for pre-planning and design for the wall reconstruction project. So we are now trying to figure out what that contract looks like with Woodard and Curran. And kind of peeling off the other costs for reimbursement, so.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approve, one seventy eight.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby, hereby accepting the resignation of Emma Buschieri, Recreation Assistant Panther Club, effective May third, two thousand twenty four.
Is there a second?
Second, it should probably be the accepts.
It should, right?
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approve, one seventy nine.
Can I ask something?
Slow.
Sure.
Comment, is that comment or it's just people?
There's constant flow.
Oh, okay.
I mean, the Panther Club and it's a shout out opportunity to remind people if they're interested. You know, it's because it's after school hours, it fits with people's lives for a period of time. You know, some people wear this for a long haul, but others, then they get a full time job or something changes, so. You'll see a lot of.
I'll see a lot, okay, that's what I saw, I just.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of Robert Santander, Recreation Assistant, on an as needed basis. Effective May fourteenth, twenty twenty four, at an hour late of twenty two dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I thank you, Robert, David, one eighty.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign his proposal from Amal Dig. Small Broadcasting in the amount of one thousand dollars for the purposes of digital marketing.
Is there a second?
Second.
An evolution of our relationship with one, with Amal, which is one oh seven point one, the peak. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion approved, one eighty one, David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby creates a climate smart community pledge task force to com- to comprise of a maximum of nine people. Representing various stakeholder groups affiliated with the Village of Pleasantville. And we had further resolved that Nicole Asker of the Village of Pleasantville be. Appointed as a climate smart coordinator to assist the village in achieving a round of goals.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is the aforementioned Nicole Asker willing to accept this?
Indeed.
All in favor?
I think you referred to me as the climate czar.
Would you like us to amend the resolution?
Well, we can leave it that way.
All right. All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. That was the last of our regular. Resolutions. Is there any comment from anyone? There is no one in the room. Is there any comment from any member of the public? Or anyone else who might be attending remotely?
I had a question come to me from a couple of residents.
Yes.
There's a sign in the parking lot of the library. I don't know whether it's old or people have just started noticing it or something. Saying that parking is for library users only. And that they'll tow cars. And they just wanted to clarify whether they can park there for other village and school events.
I, I think the answer to that is obviously lots of people do that, but the, the library is asserting that. It's for library patrons. I mean, hypothetical, that becomes a problem. They have the right to tow. I can tell you. At various points, we've had trouble, obviously people park there episodically, pick up drop off at school. Which becomes an issue for library patrons. We also have had occasionally people parking there for extended periods of time. Who have nothing to do with the library. So is that your sense of it, Paul?
Yeah, I mean, from talking to them, I think the concern is more that. More people are taking advantage of the situation than not. So it's, that's where I.
Is it more the school pick up drop off that there, that's a huge issue?
I think so.
Is it the first time they're putting up a sign with them?
It's been there a long time.
Oh, interesting.
Don't worry about the safety issues.
Sign new? I don't think the sign's new.
No.
Yeah.
So have they ever towed anyone?
I don't know that part.
Oh.
Yeah. I mean, all I can say, the, the issue has ebbed and flowed over time, as I recall, even, you know, from many, many years ago. But I can, I mean, there was a point in time when. Cars were, were looping around in a horseshoe in the drive aisle of the lot. So that it was impossible for anybody who was parked to get in or out during that time period. You know, obviously those are just, which just can't happen, right?
And is it, what's the kind of vehicle status of the lot? Is that ours administered by, administered by the library or theirs or?
The, the land itself.
Yeah.
I think is, is.
So remember, there's some complexity when we're talking.
There is some complexity, there is some complexity to it.
I just want to make sure that like, that there's no risk of people going to village events, for instance, ever being towed.
Well, what's a village event? I mean, in theory.
Music festival could be a village.
Okay, you can't park there to go to the music festival.
Well, you could.
You shouldn't.
Well, it'd be a long walk.
Yes. So look, I, I mean, I think it, again, I can't speak for the library, but my sense of it over all the years I've heard pieces of it. Is that. Nobody's trying to, you know, be, have some sort of draconian crackdown. But there are points when people need to be reminded that the purpose of that parking lot is to make it possible for people to go to the library. And when that. And when that at episodes, when that becomes a problem, they have the theoretical right to get you towed. Um, I think part of it is also just an effort to remind people that that's what it's for. It isn't a a parking lot free for whatever use you might have for.
One related problem that resident brought up to me was the fact that cars have been parking. Right next to the, when you're turning out of the library parking lot, there's a space right there with a no parking sign.
Right.
And it's because of visibility issues when you're making the right turn there. People have been parking near to drop off the pickup.
I mean, I can tell you, you you no doubt all seen it. I see it all the time. People's uh, you know, put on the flashers behavior is out of control.
Yeah.
I uh, waited on Saturday for this guy to return to the car. Who had parked, we recently, thank you, D P W, uh, I had asked about striping the the little triangle as you come out of the. Out of the uh, the parking lot between the former fish store and Soul Brewing. So we have a little section there zebra striped. This guy has parked, uh, literally his his car is halfway blocking the driveway.
I guess.
And cars are lined up, unable to get out. He's got the flashers on, but he's just left. And he he he, I would say it was ten minutes when he completely blocking the parking.
He's.
And when he, I stood there waiting for him, uh, which is perhaps a bad idea. Uh, but. You you know, when we're we're talking, we're talking about people. What did he say? He said he was sorry, but you know, yeah, yeah.
Was it delivered?
No, he was picking up food.
In a sound. Can't see.
I mean, I I.
Really?
I meant it, I was driving down Bedford Road here past past Taco Project. The guy in front of me. Literally stops in the drive aisle on Bedford Road. In front of On's Chinese, stops the car, puts on the flashers and goes in.
I have actually seen it's kind of.
That's crazy.
With the pickup and ons, it's always got a little uh.
Right, like I'm gonna stop in the road. I there's no. Oh, yeah. So fit and rate, I mean, the same thing happens. We see this, we have no parking zones near the side streets around B R S.
Yeah.
And people like, oh, as long as I'm in the car, it's okay. But what it means, you know, in this situation coming out by Soul Brewing, people park too close to the edge, even if they're not blocking the street. Depending on who's parked on the opposite side, you literally have to make a K turn to get out of the parking lot. So.
Actually, I have a question to that with the timing of the light on Wheeler. I know we talked about that a couple of weeks ago. Is that something that?
Yep, the R F P is being drafted now.
Oh.
Of the, yep, equipment.
Just curious, yeah.
I mean, it's it's a long.
Weekend.
Yeah, we're gonna do. So people, it's it's not really understandably, people believe like, okay, get up there and tweak it. Oh, we can't just change.
Right, yeah, yeah, it takes.
Oh, my god.
Um, speaking of another uh, parking type issue is the uh, I don't know if you guys saw that uh, the resident um. Alan uh.
Norton.
Norton, who uh, was working with the office, that she was able to. They're doing a traffic study right at the.
Right, about the possibility of a strobe light at at B R S.
I think there wasn't, it wasn't said directly what it would be, but that it was just that it will be.
Yeah, so again, it's uh, more power to her for pushing that forward.
Very quickly done.
Yeah, I I'm, and thank you to Mary Jane Chipp's office for also pushing that.
Yeah.
Uh, the next question will be. We we are a little short of confidence in it in D O T to them.
Yes, the, we're we're hoping for the best and expecting.
Yeah.
Can I ask one more traffic light question? I'm sorry, I feel like I'm a meat and privilege, but.
Well, you are a czar now.
Well, the traffic is already there, but I'll work on it. They um.
Wanna be?
No, I'm really.
I'll see.
Okay, um, I know this this question has come up before, but I could get a quick refresher. The light, when you're going down tra- uh, Washington. And you are gonna make a right or left on Mandeville there. Very slow, right? And my my sense is that that is gonna be recalibrated at some point?
Yes, so that's a state D O T uh, camera.
Yeah.
We talk, I've I've made comments to our traffic engineer, H V E A.
Mm-hmm.
And they said, yes, once that project is done.
Yeah.
That's the time that D O T will go back and recalibrate the lights.
Okay.
Um, you know, I I know that it's been an issue, so I would like to ask now. But they said now is really not, you don't want them to do it now and then not do it, you know, for the civil.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, when they come in, we've got a lot to do.
Yeah, I mean, we we we. We're about to spend another seventy five thousand on this equipment with the traffic lights, but. This, but the light here by Village Hall, the light down by Key Food, the light at Pleasantville Road will. In the end, be functioning much better as a trio.
Yes, and and we may have some uh, multi modal, multi modal funding left over, about fifty five thousand dollars. Uh, that we can.
Hmm.
Let's spread.
There's no, there's no other way that we're notifying, by the way, the resident.
I was gonna say that, should we do something like in the, you know, the, well, we, sort of like the monthly newsletter?
Yeah, I have, I have that updated.
Oh, that's one thing.
You'll you'll hit every traffic area, like this is where we're working on these.
Yeah.
So we're getting that question constant and that's a constant thing that's being put up in the social media groups. Like the Washington Avenue one was just argued this whole weekend about how how slow it was.
Mm-hmm.
So I think an answer to being like, hey, here's an update of that, I think could be really. Redacted.
Yeah, for sure. Sounds good.
Alright, um, anything else on that? Then is uh. We have an executive session, but we have one more work session item, so. Is there a motion to return briefly to work session to discuss parking permit rates? And then to go into executive session uh, to discuss uh, contractual. Uh, real property and personnel matters.
Yeah.
So.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Alrighty, uh, so we will see you in a little more than two weeks because of Memorial Day. We hope to see. Uh, as many people as possible uh, at a Memorial Day. A ceremony on Monday, May twenty seventh, starting at ten A M at B R S and then marching down to Memorial Plaza for the continued ceremony. Uh, but our next board meeting is as a result on Wednesday, the twenty ninth. And uh, if you've made it to Memorial Day and to the village board meeting, you will almost certainly go to the fire department parade. And you should, uh, Friday, May thirty one. Thank you all and good. Alright, so back to the work session. The question was. Uh. Parking permit rates, right? Driven in part by the fact that we have these parking spaces that are accruing to us. At Seventeen Memorial. Uh, they have identified which ones uh, we get and they are. At at the bottom of the ramp, parking level three, right? So you enter and go down essentially two floors. And these will be numbered spaces and the people who get, who buy these spaces will have a key fob of some sort.
License plate reader.
It's a license plate reader.
We we will also uh, supply hang tags. Uh, numbered hang tags. But that's, you know, for.
Okay, so that those uh, spaces depending on who you are and where you go are either. The best ones we've ever had or inconvenient. They are the first time we've ever had permanent spaces that are indoor parking. Uh, but they are also. Uh, at the third level of the garage and you drive down and then have to come back up. So if you, for example, a train commuter, it's a longer uh, walk.
Well, second market segmentation, right? So we want the segment of people for them that it's more valuable.
Yeah, so I mean, one of the hypotheticals is that it might be uh, very attractive to. Uh, uh, people working in it. Do a business parade holder. Snowy day, whatever. You don't have to worry.
Can I ask, you 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 put up some sample rates?
Yeah.
Why that some towns have different rates for different months? Is that? Or am I misreading that?
Yeah, I saw that too, um. It's hard, it's really hard to compare apples to apples.
Are they, they, okay, so it probably isn't relevant anyway. So I don't think too much.
Well, so the other point to make is we, we have not adjusted our general parking rates in many, many years. Um.
Are ours on this, on this uh, thing?
They are not.
No, um, but for context, Memorial Plaza for resident is six hundred dollars for a number of six fifty.
Okay. And and Memorial is the highest, I would imagine, right?
And we have increasing demand, right? Your your, the waitlist is growing.
Yes.
And in the hypothetical that, you know, obviously every year there are a few people who don't renew. But during the pandemic, we had a lot. We're not likely to see that again.
No.
So did we reach any kind of further? Uh, ideas about whether we should be concerned about residents of Seventeen Memorial Plaza? Taking our spots?
I I think it's, that's gonna be more of a non-issue. We're working with legal to see if we can propitiate in general, um. But uh, given the lengthy waitlist, even if somebody wanted to get on the waitlist that lives in that building there.
Got a long way to go.
Got a long way to go.
Alright.
Furthermore, we've talked about um, twenty four seven access and in conversations with the mayor and the property owner. And it's settled in a seventy two hour limit.
Mm-hmm.
So you can park overnight. Up to seventy two hours, which would also work against the resident of that building wanting to get a.
Right.
So.
Right, so.
That's a good.
Top of my. At any rate, we we've had some initial thought that perhaps those spaces might be twelve hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm, or I I mean, just chatting twelve hundred for resident, maybe fifteen hundred for a non-resident.
Or fifteen thousand.
I mean, it clearly sees everywhere that non-resident gets taken a lot harder, which makes sense.
Yeah.
A lot. I mean, Mount Pleasant, I was looking at, it's more than, almost a little bit, almost one dollar. Out there, yeah.
Yeah, they're in a somewhat different circumstance where they have much more likely in that circumstance that it's a non-resident train commuter. Obviously, we could have that, uh, but. I mean, historically, we've never gotten to the point of selling to non-residents who aren't business.
No.
People, we haven't ever even been close to it.
We don't even put them on the waitlist.
Right, I mean, there there is no doubt that there are some folks, for example, in Briar Cliff who would be happy to buy a space.
We get involved all the time. We just, our mom, we just haven't accommodated at this point.
Um, so I I would suggest then that we select a much higher rate for the non-resident for this lot specifically. Then we're protected in the situation that. We turn out to have a little bit less demand. Then you can open it to those people who would, you know, pay for the golden ticket.
So it's an interesting question if we said. Uh, uh, I mean, just imagining who might be interested in it. I was imagining somebody who is a. A uh, uh, works in the village might be interested, right? For example, has a coworking space. At, uh, in the building with Starbucks. They have some of their own parking.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that all those we we work kind of spaces qualify for partner or not. Somebody like that could park right nearby, that might be very attractive. Um. And obviously would benefit us to serve them as opposed to somebody from out of town who was willing to pay a lot. So it was twelve hundred. What would the rate, if the resident rate twelve hundred, what would the business rate be?
Fifteen? I mean, we could always, I mean, the the beauty is we set, we technically set these rates annually with our master premium scale, so. We decide on a number now and then recalibrate next year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, given the demand.
So are we gonna be increasing the rate for Memorial Plaza as well? Or it's hard for me to tell.
I I. I also, I believe in Mount Pleasant. Your permit does not guarantee your space. I think they sell permits. Well beyond the number of spaces available. It may not be an issue anymore.
Yeah. Um, I mean, it's, it's really up to your discretion. I don't know if right now we'd wanna mess with the other. Lots.
Other rates, okay.
Yeah, maybe we make that a discussion point next budget cycle. Um, and really um, give the permit holders. Notification that this is coming down, because renewals really start beginning of June.
What's our, what's the amount now for uh, the Memorial Plaza?
Six hundred and six fifty for non.
And we give some preference to residents, right?
Yes.
So it's interesting, Scarsdale, the Christie Place Garage is kind of a rather parallel circumstance. Obviously, Scarsdale is a a different. Animal all by itself, but Christie Place was a public private thing and there's public parking under uh, a private retail and. Condo thing. They're charging seventeen hundred dollars to a resident. Um, twenty four seventy five to a non-resident. Nine hundred twice a year for a semi-annual, thirteen hundred twice a year for a semi-annual for a non-resident. Um, I don't, I mean, twelve hundred and fifteen hundred seems like a decent place to be. I mean, we're making the assumption that these will be premium places. It may be that the market will tell us otherwise because.
Yeah, we want that for sure.
Because of the extra complexity of getting into it.
Well, what's the worst that could happen? We could always adjust the rates.
Well, if we undersold it, then I think that we should just go to the people who will pay more for it.
Yeah, but if we go to that, I mean, uh, do, I mean, I guess obviously we could throw them out in the following year if we decide to.
Yeah.
Moderate the rates, but historically, once you get it. Certainly, we make no commitment, I suppose, to a non-resident, that they have the right to automatically renew.
Right.
They have to make sure that's like in bold correct in their application.
Cause residents have the right to automatically renew what they have.
Right.
Alright, yeah, that makes perfect sense.
So what we'll also do is initiate a local law. Uh, now that we've tried to set the guide, the guidelines, uh, we'll go through that process. Uh, and then obviously create the verbiage, uh. If you stay longer than seventy two hours, you're subject to being towed, you know, all the. Maybe group details, but this is very helpful until we set the price so they can.
Yeah.
Put this on motion.
Great.
So you don't think we should touch the other rates?
I mean, I think we're late in the process now.
You may like print the things in.
We've tried to make.
Actually gonna try to do everything by email this year.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if we just go to seven hundred for Memorial, like fifty dollars.
Well, you think Alyssa.
I mean, it doesn't generate very much money.
Alyssa will be.
I think no matter what, people are gonna be upset. Be upset whether we do it this year, whether we do it next year.
Alright.
I think because they've stayed the same for so long. How how many years ago?
I wanna say.
For three and they've been the same.
I wanna say it hasn't been changed in.
And how often is it?
Seven, eight, nine years.
Really?
How often do you, the villagers change them?
I don't know. I mean, as you can see from that thing that was in the detachment, they're all across the board.
Wow.
But again, you don't really know what that all means, like.
Yeah, I think it's a good time to do it considering all the work that's been done there, uh, at least Memorial Plaza.
Well, although you could make the argument that because that's gonna be a mess for a while. Maybe we should lay off.
I think, I think we leave it next year.
Once it's done.
I would make like a hundred percent neck here at least. Yeah, but that's a thing. We do it next year, we really justify it and we tell everyone in advance that we're increasing a lot more than sixty dollars.
Either way, they're gonna be upset.
So just for, I I was on the waiting list for a long time and my card came up. And I gotta say, it has really been a game changer.
Really?
Oh, my god, you know, on days I have to drive somewhere else or whatever, you know, oh, Christ, where do we?
We can just dedicate a parking spot anyway. I mean, I feel like that should.
Yeah.
I mean.
I'm, I'm strongly opposed to, to, uh.
No name, you know what? Like, I mean, I feel like that's pretty appropriate.
When I'm on the way off the board, I just, so that, you know, whatever that is, whatever date that is in the future, I'm gonna strongly push for increases in pay for the board and the mayor and for free parking. I won't do it.
You're sounding like Jonathan.
I think. Full capacity. Well, look, for me, it's a different issue. It's a, it's an equity issue.
Yeah, I mean.
Anybody who's not upper, who's not with a higher income can't afford to be on this board and so their opinions don't necessarily get represented because of the luxury.
I'm asked that question often.
Well, people make the assumption that we make all kinds of money.
Right, so once they find out.
Somebody told me that they, an election worker told me that.
And why do you do this?
They were discussing that, uh, that somebody thought the reason I ran again is they couldn't afford to lose the health insurance. Okay, yeah, let me just help you out.
That. Yeah, I mean, that's, and I went to, I didn't care if someone, I went to a conference of Latino elected officials and I was literally the only person there that was doing that as really a voluntary and literally there was like a hundred people there and everyone was just talking about where they're from and essentially telling their salaries to try, try to compare it to see what they do and how to get a better salary. And I was like, uh, we got a slight bump. They're like, oh, but it'd be like, how much? I'm like, thirty-five hundred. They're like, what? Literally, they were all like, thank you for your service.
Yeah, so let me just say, I mean, obviously there are a lot to be said about it and I do think probably it's time for an adjustment, but, um, it's, in all these years, the people I've served with, people I agree with, people I don't agree with, people I felt more simpatico with, people I felt less simpatico with, I've never felt somebody wasn't doing it for the right reasons. And I can tell you in conversations with others elsewhere around the community, I mean, around, uh, Westchester, in places where you've got board members who are making, you know, twenty-five thousand plus health insurance, um, it, it changes the dynamic, right? People are running for a very different reason. Uh, maybe they ran for the right reason to begin with, but they wanna be done with it, but can't because it's, it's, uh, such a significant hit. And/or it turns into kind of bloody politics because, um, somebody who wants to run against you is coming at a significant piece of your livelihood, so.
Yeah, it's hard because.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Like, now it's sort of like one of those charity boards where it's pay-to-play, you know? You wanna be on the board of the New York Conservatory or whatever, make it twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, honestly, I don't, I don't think there's any likelihood of changing power compensation in a way that would actually change that dynamic, right? I mean, you couldn't be paying not.
That's true, but I, I think Jonathan's point of like, you know, things like free pool pass passes or whatever it is, like, I think would motivate some people.
Yeah.
I tell, I, yes, I, I can tell you long before my time on this board, it used to be that uh, all the board members had little badges that mounted on the back bumper. Like, they were like police badges.
You actually can still hide it. They didn't, the police, you just told me that when I.
They, yeah, they mounted on the back bumper.
You, you could technically have like a.
A badge.
A badge.
Yeah, because you're, you're.
Wait, where's my, I'm getting a badge.
I do have a badge.
I don't have a badge. Where do I get these badges?
The badge is kind of awesome. I've never.
I, I, I advocated for business cards and they've been great.
Hold on.
Though that'll.
Then, uh, before we get too far, we should, T-shirts, we should leave the, we should leave the Zoom and go into executive session. Is there a motion to go into the aforementioned executive session?
So.
Aye.
Hi.
There we go. There we go. Thank.